Yeah, we'd be nice to keep these things out. We'd be great if we could do that.
That's rehearsal.
Yes, really. Yeah.
I'm going to have to go to the other side.
I'm going to have to go to the other side. Not all in my pool is.
There's a big empty bag.
Well, there's some very tall leaves.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Two, two.
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 That's true, this year and last year.
It's been pretty complex.
Yeah.
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 Down four percent.
Yeah.
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 Down just a little bit.
Yeah.
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 Unfortunately, people writing to the office can't read the column.
Yeah.
I just got all the shirts off.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any of Eric's.
Yeah.
Christian has been coming.
Oh.
But he gets things.
He doesn't say a whole lot.
No, he doesn't.
I think I don't know that from DeBrant or how he did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So interesting.
Yeah.
It was quite efficient.
Yeah.
Nasty.
Yeah, one for two.
Yeah, there was a little something on the corner.
One for two.
This one is not.
Yeah.
Twenty-two.
Oh.
Ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Guaranteed that you want to.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Marshville Borough. Call, we will call to order the regular meeting of Marshville Borough Council, October 21st, 2019. During our moment of silence tonight, if I could please ask you all to remember Mr. James Gaffigan, who passed away last week. Anyone that knew Mr. Gaffigan, which I think is about everybody in town, knew he dedicated his life to Marshville. He's lived here his whole life. He designed and sculpted the statue for us, the Robert Morris Plaza. He was part of the Historic Society Board for many years, where he helped to preserve that building, maintenance on that building, did a lot of tender loving care there. He was a very dedicated man, and if you could all just remember his wife Doris, and family and friends at this time. Let us ask for a moment of silence and our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could have a roll call, thanks.
Councilman Bowles?
Councilman Bowles?
Oh, thank you.
Here.
Councilman Drayson?
Here.
Councilman McQuarigo?
Councilman Laras?
Here.
Councilman Day?
Here.
Councilman Parker?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
And Councilman May?
Here.
Thank you. Before we begin, sorry, our public comment, we're first going to make some adjustments to the agenda, so everyone knows we've had some changes where several have to come off of the agenda. The manager will explain what the reasons are, and two other ones are being requested to put on the agenda. So I'll let Scott weigh in on that.
Thank you, Madam President. We are going to bump three items from the agenda tonight to the November agenda with council's approval. They are 9E, which is a new policy for the police department, which is still going through editing. 9G, which is the extension of a collective bargaining agreement with AFSCME, which is going through legal review and editing. And...
9H?
9H, which is still going back and forth between the Planning Commission and the Solicitor's Office with some edits. So we hope to have those three items prepared for you for your November meeting and circulated to you in advance of that meeting for review. At the same time, we're going to ask council if you will consider this evening the Borough Engineers' Recommendation, which was in your folders tonight, to award Phase II of the Historic Summer Seat Accessibility Project, which was, the bid opening was on Thursday, and the bid tabulation was previously provided, but I believe is also in your packets tonight.
Yes. The other motion that was asked by Councilman Yeager to have added to the agenda for council's decisions on it is a motion to award, oh, I'm sorry, a motion to approve the Shamrock, the Park Festival that you all got your paperwork on during the agenda meeting, and that would be March 14th, 2020. Of course, they have to submit all required documents and things like that, so it's up for consideration for the council. So I have a copy of these.
Can you repeat that date, please?
I'm sorry. It's March 14th, 2020, and I'll read the full motion at the time. So one will be, the one for the historic accessibility improvements will be 9J, and the other one will be 9K, and I have copies of them here for you, Virginia, so you have the wording. Okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay.
Took care of that, so then we will open public comment. Our public comment is limited to three minutes. Ms. Larson will let you know when you get to the one-minute timeframe, so raise your arms that you can wrap up. The first one come to is Hassan Jalad. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. Hassan Jalad, 45 Rejev.
I'm sorry, 25?
Forty-five, forty-five Rejev.
Thank you.
I thought you would know him by now.
Okay.
Okay. Hi. I wanted to follow up on the usual party house. It just seems whatever we're, has been done so far is not working or not effective as of now. So the activities are continuing and the violation is continuing, and it doesn't seem as anything is stopping it. So I would like just to shed some light on what, you know, what you guys are doing, what the strategy is, how, how this citation system is working. The violation happens on a daily basis, as I understand it, as long as it's advertised on Airbnb, it's violation. So whatever that means, every day goes by, is a violation, not to prove it with all the reviews and all the, you know, what you, what one would see on a daily basis. The other, the other one is, well, two other things. I would appreciate if, you know, if whoever I'm contacting within the borough to at least recognize my emails and respond to our concerns, at least recognize that the email's been received. We have no way of telling whether you got my email information. We're trying to work with you. I would appreciate it if you work with us as well. The other one, I don't know what the, how's this working, but where the, where the hell is the mayor? You know? I hope he's listening.
I know.
You know, you have mayors running for presidents, and, you know, where is he? That's embarrassing, you know? I would appreciate it if he, if he starts attending or don't even commit to this job to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Harmon, please state your name and address for the record.
Holly Harmon, Hillside Avenue. Just wanted to thank everybody that came out and volunteered and helped with the first annual Marshville Food Truck and Music Festival last month. It was a good turnout, and it was a lot of fun. And I also am curious as to where the mayor is. It's been over six months and not even a note being passed as to why he's absent. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been six months.
Jane Berger, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jane Berger, 90, West Maple Avenue, Marshville. Thank you. Well, this will be short, since several of the items had questions on and have been scratched. I know next month, when you deal with the AFSCME, I do hope you give the residents a summary of the, the main items, if there's changes, COLA, length of contract, or whatever. It's always been a difficult thing in collective bargaining, that until you're ready to kind of devote, it's, it's executive. So that's always been a bugaboo of how and when the public can, can know what's happening on that before you actually, you know, finish your vote that night. I do want to acknowledge that I saw that the borough has gotten some additional grants, and perhaps, Madam President, you will mention them later, but I am thrilled you're able to get the additional grant, particularly for the library roof, given the discussions in last year's budget, when the council had finally found out after three years of some miscommunications to people outside administration, that there was a serious leak problem in that building. And you did want to put some money in the budget, but there was a particular council that didn't think you needed to put anything in the library budget last year, and you did have to come up with money for emergency repairs. So this grant will certainly go a long way to finishing the roof repairs. It is a slate roof, and I know that's expensive, and that certainly is, it's a challenge of a building, but it's also a gem of a building. So I do want to acknowledge that. That grant was extremely important, given the decisions regarding that in the funding for the budget year that's almost over. Okay, that was scratched, that was scratched. And just as a positive, the Walk Works Active Transportation Plan, thank you for the presentation, the gentleman last Tuesday. It seems like a very positive thing for the borough. That's it.
Thank you. Seeing there's someone else on there, we will close public comment at this time. Any, any remarks from the public will be...
I apologize, I'm late.
Okay. All right. You have three minutes. Just give me your name and address for the record.
Okay, for the record, it's Graham Thompson, and it's 341 Hillcrest.
Sure.
And I just actually had some questions regarding the comprehensive inspection programs of curbs and sidewalks. I received notice for a couple of properties that I have here in town. It doesn't make any note as to what code this is referring to.
It's our ordinance, right?
Yeah, it's Borough Ordinance, Property Maintenance Code. It's available on the website, and specifications regarding the curbs, aprons, and sidewalks is available on the Public Portal section of the website.
Okay. You wrote one of my properties up for quite a large number of tiles, I believe, 11 of them. And I had a concrete contractor come out, and the concrete contractor was very confused as to what was wrong with many of those tiles. He didn't see any problem with any of them. Maybe a minor crack, but certainly nothing that's a quarter inch of movement in any direction. I'm wondering why those were written up. When I pointed to some of my neighbors, they're just, same problem, you know? There's nothing wrong with a lot of these tiles. Meanwhile, I have property, I have tiles on some of the properties that are shambles. I mean, they need to be replaced, and we're probably going to be replaced in the spring, but they're not marked at all. I'm wondering who's doing this marking, and what's their criteria for marking them?
The code enforcement officer, and you're welcome to schedule an appointment with him. He'll be happy to meet you at your property to discuss whatever the issue is.
Okay. And as I mentioned, I've spoken to many of my neighbors about this. Is it all right to have one appointment for multiple neighbors and...
Sure, if you can get everybody together, yeah.
Also, it mentions that...
Time is up.
You've got one minute.
Oh, sorry. I apologize, I lost my train of thought there. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Public comment is closed at this time, and the officials, if they wish to comment, will be during the Borough Officials at the end of the meeting. At this time, we are going to move on to approval of our minutes. We have the minutes for August 19th, 2019, September 10th, 2019, and September 16th, 2019. If it pleases the council, we can do these all in one vote?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on the motion for it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. We'll go on to our finance. Everyone got the Treasury's report? If anyone has any questions about the Treasury report? We will move on to 7B then. We call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Can I have a roll call, please, on this? Oh, I'm sorry, any questions or comments on the motion? Ring none? Then we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilman Drayson?
Yes.
Councilman McQuarigo?
Yes.
Councilman Laras?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. In place of the mayor's report tonight, the Solicitor would like to have a few moments to speak.
All right, yeah, we have a couple of things to report. First is with regard to the opioid litigation. The borough had elected to be a plaintiff, one of many municipalities, counties, states that are suing various pharmaceutical companies, distribution networks, retailers, as a result of the opioid crisis and the damage it's done. Things are moving along with that, and actually, at this point, pretty much all of the plaintiff, states, counties, cities, are all part of what's being approved as a negotiations class. Basically, it's consolidating the, the ability of all these plaintiffs to negotiate with the big players in the litigation. The court is certifying that negotiations class, so I am supposed to stand here before council and let you know that, at this point, the borough has the option to opt out of that negotiations class if they wish to do so. We would strongly recommend against that, because basically that would mean sort of taking the borough out of that collective negotiations unit and going it alone, and we're a much smaller player than some of these other entities. So if anybody wants to make a motion to opt out, obviously, council can vote on that. We strongly recommend against it. Second, some good news locally. There was an illegal recovery house operation that was going on on 400 block of North Delmore. Basically, it opened up without being approved, was sort of running as a gypsy operation. There were numerous complaints. We instituted some litigation, seeking to abate the nuisance, as it were, and that, I'm glad to say, rapidly resolved, and they are winding down operations. My understanding is the property is either going to be leased or sold. I think it's being listed for sale by the owner right now, and that should be back to a residential use in no time, so that's some good news for the borough.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to our action items. 9A is a call for a motion to adopt the 2019 Halloween policy. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. On, well, I guess I should read it first, right, before we do anything? Okay. All right, here we go. Standard one we have every year, but I'll read it for the public. Halloween trick-or-treat activity. It is the policy of the mayor and the borough council that all door-to-door trick-or-treat activity in connection with Halloween shall take place on Thursday, October 31st, 2019, until 8:00 PM. All children under 16 years of age shall be accompanied by a responsible adult. Tips for the motorists are obey our speed limits, watch for children walking along the road, or who may run into the street. If you are going to a party, please remember to designate a sober driver. Tips for the parents and guardians, buy or make brightly colored, highly visible costumes for children that do not interfere with a child's ability to see, hear, or walk. Add stripes of reflective tape to darker color costumes and trick-or-treat bags. Provide a flashlight or glow stick for children to carry. Always accompany the children while they are trick-or-treating. Remind children to pay attention to their surroundings. Tips for the children, walk instead of running when crossing the streets. Look both ways for approaching cars before stepping off the curb. Walk on sidewalks whenever possible. Residents are cautioned not to permit anyone into their homes unless they know the identity of such person. Conversely, children and parents are cautioned not to enter anyone's house unless they know the residence, and then only if they have the permission of the parent or guardian. Children should bring all edibles to their parents or guardian before eating such items. Parents should carefully inspect all items given to their children to ensure that the items are safe. The mayor and the borough council wishes everyone a safe and happy Halloween holiday. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9B, call for motion to acknowledge receipt of $46,114.21 from the Pennsylvania Department of the Auditor General, and to approve distribution of 100% to the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, have a roll call, please.
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilman Drayson?
Yes.
Councilman McQuarigo?
Yes.
Councilman Laras?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9C, call for motion to adopt the Walk Works Active Transportation Plan as recommended by the Steering Committee and the Borough Engineer. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9D, call for motion to re-approve Habitat for Humanity Development Plans to be rerecorded with the County of Bucks and to accept a requisite O and M agreements. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? Okay. Have a roll call, please, on this.
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilman Drayson?
Yes.
Councilman McQuarigo?
Yes.
Councilman Larris?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, motion 9E was pulled till November. Motion 9F is a call for motion to adopt a new part-time police officers' hours policy for the police department. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
And this now gives, moves us from a 30-hour limit per week to a 60-hour limit every two weeks. Is that correct?
Yes, it's 60 within the two-week period of, is there a pay period? Yes.
So in theory, they could work 60 hours one week and zero the next?
As long as they stay within the 60 hours for two-week period, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilman Drayson?
Yes.
Councilman McQuarigo?
Yes.
Councilman Laras?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9G was pulled until November. Motion 9H was also pulled till November. Motion 9I, call for motion to approve annual contribution of $3,000 to the Marshville Senior Service Center Incorporated. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilman Drayson?
Yes.
Councilman McQuarigo?
Yes.
Councilman Laras?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. And the next motion is 9J. Motion to award the Historic Summer Seat Accessibility Improvements Phase II to be awarded to NJS Concrete for the total contract amount of $185,394.50. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Mr. Mitchell, wasn't our total award for this grant over $300,000?
$325,000, yes.
So now that we're $150,000 or thereabouts under budget, what happens to that money?
We will work something out with CDBG to reclass that money for something else related to the Patriots Park project.
Love it.
As long as they're willing to do it and HUD signs off on it.
So once they complete all of the work that needs to be done, then we'll have a number as to what is left over at that point, in case there's anything that comes into those sidewalks and water problems they have to do as far as your sewage and stuff. And then whatever's left over, they'll ask for a change order for it to go for the rest of the park. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, motion nine K. Motion to approve the Shamrock the Park Festival in Williamson Park on March 14th, 2020, contingent upon submitting and approval of all required documents and insurance for the application. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I have a comment. I'm just, would have liked a little bit more time to hear from people putting on the event about the security they were going to provide since there'll be a beer garden there. Other than that, I have no objections to that. I would just like to have heard more before.
Yeah, well, they're going to have to provide all that. So if there's anything that isn't provided properly, it won't happen.
My concern is, once we say yes, if, you know, how do we?
That's why it's contingent. It's contingent on them providing everything that we need.
Right, because that's just new territory. I just wanted to know what, you know,
Yeah, that's why.
what the plan was, you know, alcohol and public places, you know.
Absolutely. They have to get the proper licensing.
Especially the first time, you know.
Yes, absolutely.
To add to the motion, Madam President, if you wish, in addition to the normal application documents and certificate of insurance that they submit a, for lack of a better term, security plan?
Security plan.
Related to the event.
Okay. Okay, how about if I add that at the end and then want me to reread that? Okay, would that be good? A motion to approve the Shamrock the Park Festival in Williamson Park on March 14th, 2020, contingent upon submitting and approval of all required documents and insurance for the application and submitting a security plan. Okay, is that good?
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry if you, I'm sorry I was late, so I don't know if this might have been already addressed. Is this coming from the rec board?
No.
Or is this under separate?
This is a private event.
It's a private event, okay.
Yes, yes, this is, yeah. Okay, is everyone okay with that? Then I will, everyone okay with the change of this motion I've added?
Yes.
Okay, so Mike's okay with it and you're okay with it? All right, then that'll be the motion. And if I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, that's the end of our motions. We don't have any unfinished business that I know of. No new business, right, Mr. Mitchell?
Well, there was one matter of unfinished business, or we can talk about it wherever, really. I'm just supposed to remind council that the borough engineer needs your direction on the CDBG projects for 2020.
Okay.
Because the application period was moved up. It's going to open in December, and applications will probably be due by the end of January.
Okay.
He had given council a list at the last meeting of, I believe it was five or six potential projects. It was suggested that we narrow it to two, and they'll conduct due diligence on those two and come back to us with more detail, and you can authorize their submission.
For me, I'll just go over the ones that everyone got in their packet and was spoken by our engineer at the time. One was for Patriots Park to continue the interior part of the park. The engineer did say, though, that it's a limited amount. It would never be enough to do the full inside. You'd have to go for bigger funding from another source. You won't get all CDBG for that. ADA ramps would have been for the borough. Manor Park, construction of new playground, the parking lot, the levee, of course, and we just got a big amount for that. The levee spillway pump station and the library roof. A lot of those things, the engineer was saying that it's a long shot with CDBG on this round because we did get awarded a lot of money, which was very gracious to get along as far as we have with our park. So for me, as I'm looking at these, and council can weigh in on this, since we just got, which I'm going to actually mention to our officials, the grant for the library from the Keystone Grant cycle, that was for $52,500 for the roof repair, I mean roof replacement, I'm sorry. That is a 50% match, and we can use CDBG as a match to that to be able to put that roof on because you're talking like at least $100,000 for that. So for me, and you can all weigh in on this, I would want that to be probably the first one that maybe we would go for because there's probably a good chance that we'd be able to partner that, and it would then, there's no match from us. It would be smaller cost for our engineer to like draw the application stuff. But we need that roof on the library. So for me, that's just my personal opinion about it. And the other one would have been Manor Park and the parking lot, only because when I think about it, we don't, we can't really go for after the next phase of equipment in Williamson Park because the flood plain is still there. Until that gets done, CDBG doesn't want to even have us entertained doing it right now. They would love to do it, but you're never going to get the money for that at this time. You have to get the accreditation done. But Manor Park, we need to put some equipment in for the children, and we could probably get that, or at least give it a good shot. So for me, that would be my top two. You guys decide what you think out of the ones that are most important to go for.
I agree with you.
If I? I agree with those two, but I would like to maybe consider the ADA grant, ADA ramps, simply because we're doing paving and they're kind of like required. So maybe we would want to add that in so we don't find ourselves in some kind of quagmire in the future.
Okay, all right.
If I may, I agree with those two as well. My third was actually Patriots Park. However, I'm going to pull back on that considering that the, this project came in so low that we might be able to have some funds out of that, along with Bucks Beautiful putting a lot into that park. I think that that project is already moving in the right direction. We just got to keep with it. So I would say the library and Manor Park would be my two, aside from Patriots Park.
Anyone else have a preference on these? As you're saying, you would, because we have to give a consensus to the engineer what we want him to go for. Because CDBG, when they go to do the review, they're going to be asking, what are the top ones?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you if it matters. When I was with the county, and I believe it's still their practice, anytime you bring in a project or a CDBG application and you're using CDBG funds as part of leveraging other funds from another source, it typically scores higher as a project. So now with the announcement just on Friday about the state money for the library roof, I would think that, you know, at our agenda meeting, I probably would have ranked that one relatively low. But with the Keystone Grant announcement, I would say that probably skyrockets to number one.
And I'll say, the Manor Park Playground has seen better days. I would hate for this to turn into a situation like what we had down the island where we're being forced to tear it down and don't have a backup plan. I think we should at least try.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Well, we could also do three.
Okay, I.
If you're feeling lucky.
Yeah, as far as, I have to agree with Mr. Parker. We, as we're doing the paving, we've been holding back from the curbs just because that is a requirement. To have that done is very expensive. It can hurt to ask, you know? They can always say, hey, listen, you know, these are the top ones we're giving you, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
Didn't we recently get awarded for ADA accessibility? Wasn't that around Patriots Park?
Yeah, for Patriots Park as part of that plan, yeah.
So is the grant application monumentally different, or is this kind of almost a recycle where he's just going to throw it on a newspaper?
No, number two on the list would be a recycle because we applied for it in the last cycle.
Okay.
So we would just update it and resubmit.
Got it.
If you wanted to include it.
Yeah, like I said, I think the levee, we need to get the accreditation done. For me, that's the bottom of the, you know, the importance right now. Because we do have money we've just got awarded, we need to work on getting that done. I would say for me, it would be the ramps. The levee spillway is down the road also, so I think that's a low priority. But I think, yeah, so for me, it would be library, Manor Park, ADA ramps.
I'm good with that.
Is everyone okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Everyone?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I mean, I like the idea of levy in there, but correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the first grant we got for the levy, we had problems getting the second grant because we hadn't closed out the first grant yet.
Exactly.
Yes.
So we're probably not going to get anything for the levy.
Spend that down first.
Near finished.
Yeah, we're trying to leverage the most important ones that we know we can have a chance of getting. And right now, the library is like number one.
Is the grant that we got for the levy the same as it was in the first, for the first grant? Is it the same for the second grant where you have to use those grant funds before you can go for the next one?
Yes.
Yes, it has to be.
And actually, I think we got more money for Phase Two than we did for Phase One.
Yes, we did. Yep. $255,000, and with our match, it comes up to $300,000.
I believe it was $140,000 was the first grant.
And they closed that out.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that's what I would.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Pretty good?
Sure. Okay, so I'm going to go on to borough officials, and I'm going to say something first, since we're on this library thing here. We were thrilled to get that notice last week for the Keystone Grant. I have to thank state representatives Perry Warren and John Galloway and our state senator Sanzera.
Absolutely.
Steve Sanzera for lobbying for us for this. The library, like I said, we pulled some funds together to do the repairs on that because it was leaking a lot, and it would hold for a little while, but we were desperate to get that kind of money to actually replace that and put another slate roof on there. So for them to help us and push that through to get whatever funding they could for us was a big win. So I was really excited to get that call from the manager to say that we had gotten that. So like I said, that then shot right up the importance of trying to match that so that it doesn't come out of the borough's revenues as far as the match that was required for that. So keep your fingers crossed that we can get that because we have a gem of a library. It's beautiful. If anybody's ever been in there to see even the stained glass windows that are still original to that building. So I hope that we get that money for that. There's, everybody's interested in the leaf drop-off. A lot of these postings will also be on the borough website as well as our page on the internet for the borough. Okay. So the leaf drop, because people always ask me this, is at Riverview and Delaware Ave. It's Monday to Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
It's an undisclosed location.
Undisclosed, undisclosed location. And Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 to 3:00. Everybody goes, where's that at? And the drop-off say closes for the season on December 15th because we've had people go, oh, it's closed. The date is December 15th. The leaf pickup is at your house by Republic on your normal, regular trash days. It just has to be, the leaves must be in a, placed in a paper bag or an open trash can, and they will also pick them up there. The Friends of the Marshville Dog Park are holding their annual Monster March on Saturday, October 26th. The rain date is Sunday, October 27th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and there will be a pet parade and costume contest. And if you haven't gone to, yeah, if you haven't gone to it, it really is a hoot. You really should go. They have a great time. The MEAC is doing a cleanup and plantings at the Marshville River Preserve on Saturday, November 2nd. Rain date is November 3rd, starting at 10:00 a.m. They'll, can use any help that anyone can offer them. Bring gloves and shovels if you can. Marshville Riverfront Walk Group will be doing their last levee cleanup for the season on Saturday, November 2nd, also at 10:00 a.m. Same thing, they can use any helping hands that you can offer them, and they'll be closed down from there because the weather starts to get too bad to be on the back of that levee. Does anyone else have anything?
I do, actually. The PTO is desperately looking for more cars to participate in trunk retreat this Friday, October 25th, in the high school parking lot. Cars are needed to be inside the lot by 5:30 to 5:45 the latest to get set up. The event begins at 6:00 p.m. They will have to cancel if they do not get more people to participate. And in participation, they mean people willing to come to the event and hand out candy from their trunks and that. If anybody wishes to participate, please message Rachel Munchkin, Metchkin, sorry, I killed her name, spelled M-U-C-K-I-N. You can reach her on Facebook Messenger or email her at R.
Muckin.
Muckin, sorry. I did it.
R.
R-M-U-C-K-I-N at gmail dot com.
Okay.
It's a fun time for the kids.
It is.
Do they, do you bring candy to contribute when you bring it in?
Bring candy in.
Okay.
That's what they're looking for.
Okay.
I'll be there, so.
Okay.
Are you decorating the car this year?
We usually do, yeah. We usually take the PT Cruiser and, you know, hang some stuff from it, put some blinking skulls or stuff like that. Not too scary because it's usually young kids.
Okay.
Some people do the little free libraries in the back of their cars. Instead of candy, they do the books.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
The kids.
Them kids are going to want that candy, I'm telling you. I think on that day, they're going to want the, I would want the candy chocolates, everything.
It was cute.
Yeah. Anyone else have any announcements?
Madam President, I just wanted to comment on one of the things said during public comment about the sidewalks.
Okay.
Because I've had a number of residents contact me. I have some more information I can give. Reach out to the code enforcement officer. Although the letter, the letter does say, I believe it's replacement, you do have the option for repairs, including with blocks that just have single cracks just can be sealed. Trip hazards that are a quarter inch or more can be ground down. So you may not have to have the expense of replacing all of this stuff that they've marked or put the letter. So hopefully that helps you out.
Actually, if I may, Madam President, Mr. Thompson, if you give me your phone number before you leave, I'll have the code enforcement officer contact you.
And then if you can line that timeframe up with some of your neighbors that also have the question, that'd be a good time to do that, especially if it's on your block there, and they'll be able to answer those questions for you.
Well, it's two different blocks.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Gilad, if you'd like to say the meeting's going to end and you want to speak to us. The only thing I'm going to say is that we're continuing what we're doing. We're not going to talk about where we're going with this investigation with the party house. We all know what's going on. Any violations he's still doing, he's going to get those violations for it. It's, if, the emails, you send the emails, and Mr. Mitchell has already said that he was, he's done commenting. I mean, if you want to just say, we've received your email, we just said, send your stuff to the borough, and the code company will keep a record of everything you're sending. They're also monitoring it, too. We're not ignoring it. But we're not going to talk about it, a public comment about the investigation with this guy's house. We just can't. It's moving along. If you want to speak off-record up here after the meeting, it's entirely up to you. Okay?
Madam President?
I have a couple of things.
Go ahead, Ellen.
I'd just like to thank everyone that helped out and thank the Marshville Recreation Advisory Board for an excellent day. We probably had about 500 residents there that day for the food trucks, and the, both the bands were excellent, and the DJ. Everyone enjoyed it. A lot of people just sat there for the whole day, just listening to the music. The kids loved painting the pumpkins. I can't believe we had 150 pumpkins, and they were almost all gone. I think we might have had four left at the end of the day. And we had crafts they could paint, little wooden figures and things like that for Halloween, and they really enjoyed themselves. And the food trucks were packed with people. So we didn't really make a lot of money this year, but it didn't cost the borough anything to put it on. We made enough money with people making donations for the pumpkins.
$206.
They were free, but we made $206 on people just giving us money for the, to let their kids paint. And so that paid for the porta-pots, and the pumpkins were actually donated by a few residents as well as a few other things. And I'd just like to thank everyone, and we're looking forward to next year's. Thank you. And one more thing, the Cub Scouts at the number three on Presbyterian Church will be having a car show on Wednesday evening this week. So if you'd like to come out and see the cars and support our little Cub Scouts, appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Do you know what time that is?
I'm not sure. It's either 6:00 or 7:00.
6:00 or 7:00, okay. Okay, anyone else?
I just wanted to give an update on the Red Bridge, excuse me, replacement project that will begin happening the weekend after Thanksgiving. So the Red Bridge will be closed 8:00 a.m. November 30th through 8:00 p.m. December 15th. That's a long period. We're doing that just in case of weather. We'll try every effort to make it shorter than that. We'll be having quite a few different volunteers involved. That will be myself, Stephen Libby, and Josh Gradwall, who are all canal tenders. Most likely, that will be the people doing the teardown. We will tarp underneath the bridge and attempt to power wash the beams in order to put a fresh coat on those. And then hopefully by the following weekend, we can do the reconstruction. Also going to reach out to the Boy Scouts in regards to painting. I'd like to have the beams painted prior to arrival on site. The Boy Scouts were involved in the construction and painting of the steps leading from the bridge up to Crown Street. So I thought they might like